At the very last, the afternoon of the last possible day, eight weeks after we filed, we understand that in early June, she was telling the council that she could have this available in a week. That has stalled this long. We have had three working days to respond to her legal opinion. And I apologize that our letter and our annotated thing got to you so late, after the end of the working day. But unless you feel that you can just simply rely on Susan Segal's opinion, or you've had the time to really evaluate this for themselves, it is against your ministerial duty to vote to not put this on the ballot. This is a very serious question. It's a legal question. It's a legal responsibility of this council. And though we may be quieter than 15 now, we are just as determined. We have the means, the determination, and the lawyer to take this into court immediately if you vote to take this off the ballot. The people need to vote on this.
Okay. Let me see, Councilmember Kano. Is this one last question for the campaign?
Madam Chair, I actually am finished with my questions. I would like to make the motion to move the resolution forward to submit this as a ballot question.
Okay, so Councilmember Kano has made a motion. Councilmember Johnson.
I would like to speak on that one.
Okay, I will let Councilmember Kano.
Wouldn't have the city attorney?
Well, we were, but Councilmember Kano has made a motion. She's allowed to make her motion.
If you would like to have the city attorney take the podium, I would be willing to hold my motion to have her speak.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So we will know that Councilmember Kano has made her motion. And then Councilmember Johnson has put himself in queue. And I think if we could clear off the speaker list so we've got the motion in queue. And Ms. Segal, if you want to go ahead then. Councilmember Kano has said we will take up her motion as soon as you've had an opportunity to give us your overview.
Madam Chair and members of the council, thank you. I'm not going to repeat the legal test. I think we're all in agreement on the legal question before the council on this proposal. Real briefly, the proposal requires officers to obtain and maintain continuous professional liability insurance coverage. The proposal states that it must be the primary insurance for the officers. It must include, not limited to, but include coverage of willful or malicious acts and acts outside the scope of the officer's employment. It does allow the city to reimburse officers for the base rate of coverage, but it is prohibited from doing so for any additional cost due to personal or claims history. As Ms. Gross stated, the city has chosen to self-insure for its statutory obligations to defend and indemnify. The city has the authority now to go out into the private insurance market and to buy private professional liability insurance to cover its police officers if that is a more economic option. My assumption is that it is not a more economic option for the city, and that's why the city has chosen to self-insure. But the city does have that power now. You do not need a charter amendment or any other authority to do that. And again, that's not the question in front of the council anyhow. The defect in this proposal is that it's just in plain old conflict with state law. And state law imposes a duty on cities to defend and indemnify their employees, all their employees, not just police officers, but all their employees. Minnesota Statute Section 466.07 says cities shall defend and indemnify their employees provided that they were acting in the performance of their duties and not guilty of malfeasance, willful neglect of duty, or bad faith. And as the petitioners pointed out, when we have come to the conclusion that employees have engaged in malfeasance, willful neglect of duty, or bad faith, we have made a recommendation to this council to not defend or indemnify them. Under, there's another provision also, Section 471.44, that relates specifically to law enforcement officers. And that imposes a duty to provide a defense to law enforcement officers against lawsuits for any type of damages in connection with an arrest. And the duty of defense there includes paying all costs of and expenses of defending the suit, including witness fees and costs of legal counsel. Now, both of these provisions preempt the police liability insurance proposal here. And I think part of this, because I've honestly been trying to understand the difference of opinion here, and I've had some trouble doing that. In the written materials that the Committee for Professional Policing have put forward, they say that this charter amendment proposal would only apply to acts that the city is not required by state law to defend and indemnify employees for. But that's not what they've written. They could have written it that way, but they did not write it that way. What the proposal states, as I've said before, is that it has to be the primary insurance and that it must include, not that it is limited to, it must include coverage for those kinds of acts that the city does not have to defend and indemnify officers for. It states must include coverage for willful or malicious acts and acts outside the scope of the officer's employment. And I think that's maybe where where some of this difference of opinion comes from is thinking that their language says one thing when in fact it says something quite different. Now, the other thing about these statutes, of course, general state law supersedes any city charter provisions or any city ordinances. But the state has doubled down with these two statutory requirements and has explicitly stated that they are exclusive of and supersede all home rule charter provisions. And Section 471.44 also supersedes any other general law of the state of Minnesota. So it's pretty crystal clear. Now, how does it conflict with these two provisions? When you're talking about defense and indemnity, that's what insurance policies do. They provide defense and indemnity. So those are interchangeable words, really.
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay, I hear voices in back of me disagreeing. So what I did this morning after reading the response letter from the petitioners was I went online and Googled police professional liability insurance. And after going through a few ads that were there for defense lawyers, the first insurance company site, the first insurance company site that popped up was for Travelers. And this is what they said that they provide insurance for. And you will note that here, about halfway down the list, is defense for claims or suits. So that's what insurance is. You're providing defense and indemnity. Now, the petitioners do include in their proposed amendment a proposal, a statement that the city may reimburse officers for the base rate of coverage. And that helps their cause. But it goes on to say that officers must be personally responsible, and it prohibits the city from paying for any additional cost due to personal or claims history. And professional liability premiums, just like your home insurance or your auto insurance, once you make a claim, guess what? Your premiums are going to go up. Your experience rating is going to go up. Close to half of all lawsuits that our office defends on behalf of police officers are dismissed in the officer's favor. Typically, that's after all discovery is completed, there are depositions taken, discovery is completed, and a summary judgment motion has been filed, and perhaps it's after trial. That's hundreds of hours of attorney and paralegal time, expert witness fees, et cetera. That's a substantial cost. No insurance company in the world is going to continue you at $400 a year after paying out for that. And I think that the committee, as much as acknowledges that in their letter, that actuaries may increase premiums. So these are suits where the officers have not engaged in any unlawful conduct at all. Lawsuits are settled for a variety of reasons, as you know, from having sat in on closed council sessions where we've provided you with our reasons for settlement. Sometimes it's because there is liability and an officer has violated the policies and procedures of the police department. And the police department has opened an Internal Affairs Unit investigation. And when that's happened, you know, officers should be disciplined and ultimately terminated if they're violating the policies and procedures of the police department or violating the law. But there are a lot of reasons why cases are settled, some of which have absolutely nothing to do with whether an officer is actually engaged in malfeasance, willful neglect, or bad faith. And in all of these situations, officers would be subject to an increase in insurance premiums that they would have to pay for out of pocket. And that is how it conflicts with our statutory duty to provide defense and indemnity. Now, second independent ground here, let me catch up, yes, is the Public Employee Labor Relations Act. Cities' police officers, as we all know, are represented by a union. The Public Employee Labor Relations Act requires employers to negotiate in good faith over mandatory subjects of bargaining. What that means is that we cannot make unilateral changes in a union contract that would violate the state public employment labor relations law. Now, there are two sections of the police contract that have been in various iterations, different words, that have been in the Police Federation contract since at least 1986, which is as far back as we could easily go in our office. One, Section 26.1, the first one, which basically parrots state law with regard to providing a defense and legal counsel. Cities shall provide legal counsel to defend any employee against any action or claim. Again, it basically repeats our state law obligation. And then 26.3, which states that the city may add its option, go out and buy private insurance. So even the union contract recognizes the city's right to do that right now. But then it goes on to say that the city shall pay all premiums for such coverage. So that is at odds with what this charter amendment proposes. So that provides an independent ground, this conflict with the Public Employment Labor Relations Act for saying that this proposal, while I know it's very well-intentioned, is in conflict with state law. As such, it's not a proper subject to be placed on the ballot. And again, I don't think it should be placed on the ballot. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm not seeing councilmembers getting queue. I'll just note, Councilmember Kano has a motion that is before us. And I would invite her, if she would like to speak to her motion. And then we have a queue with a couple councilmembers in line.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our city attorney for walking us through a detailed explanation of her position. You know, I'm really struggling with the legal framework that we're currently operating under, which continues to dispose of the lives of African-American people, Latino people, indigenous people. And as a policymaker, I think it's very important for us to think about our role in allowing our community to be a part of the decisions that we make and ensuring that we are taking into consideration the multiple legal opinions that have been presented to us today and throughout the last weeks as this issue has come forward. I do want to personally apologize to the community for having this process taken so long. I know that you all submitted your signatures weeks and weeks and weeks ago, and yet you're still on the same timeline as the minimum wage issue. And to me, that is a disservice to our residents that makes it very difficult for us as policymakers to have enough time to weigh in on the issues with proper diligence. And I know that the community did not have enough time to respond to our city attorney's opinion. And yet you made it happen. You know, it's very hard to expect somebody who's working on a volunteer basis to put together these kinds of responses. But I'm going to say that after working with so many different individuals and experts outside of City Hall on this issue, I have come to believe that this is appropriate for our city charter. I believe that if we have enough political will to stand up together to say that it is appropriate, we can allow it to move forward. And that's one of the reasons why I'm making this motion today to move forward the police liability proposal as a ballot question. And also because I think that the times that we're currently living in, where we are struggling to come to terms with the aftermath of the Philando Castile shooting, which has put Minnesota on national news headlines for all the wrong reasons, we need to create a new system because what we have now is not working. And so I would much rather move in that direction than be locked into, you know, a series of legal opinions, which again, there's many legal opinions here, and continue to worry about who is going to be killed next in our community. And so on that, you know, my position is that I believe that this is appropriate for us to take on as a charter amendment. And I believe that our residents should be allowed to vote on this issue in November. And that's how I would like to move this forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we have Councilmember Andrew Johnson. You put up his little red thing. And then Council President Barb Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With these citizen petitions for charter amendments, I take them extremely, extremely seriously and do my due diligence, reading over the opinions and considering the legal arguments before us. And I know I mentioned to the organizers I had a few concerns and asked them if they could respond to that. They have. And I understand that we are on a tight timeline, and they have provided this annotated copy. And I want to let them know that I have not had a chance to read this yet. And I do plan on doing so. And so I'm going to take the rare step, which is my right at committee, to abstain from voting on this issue until I have had a chance to go over this. I have a responsibility to do that. I owe it to you. And I appreciate you responding to this. So I will go over that. And then I will make a vote, either yea or nay, by Friday on this. And if I have any questions for either Ms. Segal or for the petitioners, I will let you know. But thank you for providing this. And I understand the tight timeline and constraints, which require my abstention today so I can thoroughly review this. Thank you.
So Council President Barb Johnson is in queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move a substitute motion that the city clerk is directed to not submit the proposed charter amendment as a ballot question to the county auditor for placement on the ballot for the November 8, 2016, general election. And I just would mention, if I may, that I think our city attorney presented a reasonable and thoughtful analysis of this issue. And I appreciate the work that's been done on this. So I'm going to move that it not be put on the ballot.
Okay. So the, and I always forget a little bit what I need to do. So there's a motion to substitute before us, then we need to vote on whether to substitute and then vote on the underlying motion, whatever. Is that correct?
Madam Vice President, the substitute that's been proposed is essentially a motion that would be the opposite of the motion that's on the table, which would be an improper motion. The action to be taken is to vote on the motion that was put forward first. Because the amendment offered by substitute essentially is one that makes the adoption of the motion the opposite or the negative of the main motion, it needs to be offered as a separate motion.
I see, okay. So we will vote on Councilmember Kano's motion. And then we would take up Council President's motion as a separate motion. Thank you very much. I'm glad I asked. All right, so I am not seeing further comment on Councilmember Kano's motion. So all in approval, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
No. Thank you, sir. So there is now a separate motion in front of us, which is Council President Johnson's motion. Any discussion on that motion?
Can you please restate the motion?
Does a clerk want to help restate the motion?
The motion pending would be the adoption of a resolution that would essentially concur in the findings of the city attorney that this is not a proper subject to submit to the ballot and directing the city clerk not to submit the question to the county auditor.
Okay. So Councilmember Kano, all right. Any discussion on the Council President's motion? I'm not seeing any. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
In the people talk.
Okay. So we had a presentation from, okay, there's been a request for the roll call on this. And we always do that as a courtesy. So a clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon is absent. Kano?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Andrew Johnson?
Abstain.
Yang?
Yay.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Chair Clinton?
Aye.
There are nine ayes, one nay, one abstention, and one absent.
Okay. So I'm now just going to file, make a motion to receive and file the two city attorney opinions that were presented before us, as well as any presentation materials that were presented from the committees to us. So those are part of the official record. So all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a third item, and I am actually just going to move approval of this item. This is the strategic. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask if you could please leave the chamber so we could finish.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. So, all right. We need to be able to finish our business. Thank you. We have a motion to receive the report on the... Sir, sir, I am asking if you could please either be able to allow us to finish our meeting. Okay? Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, sir. Sir, I am asking if you could please leave now. Thank you. Okay, I can do it that way, too. I didn't want to. So, all right. To everyone, I do respect that we have very strong emotions here. Thank you. But we need to be able to finish our business. And I'm asking... Sir, you are on the record with having expressed that to us very, very strongly. I'm going to ask our security officers if you could help this gentleman leave, please. All right, we have one last item before us, and I am going to ask for a vote on this, which is to receive and file the Workplace Workforce Assessment and Diversification Staff Directive, as well as approving the enterprise workforce representation goals of hiring 41% of the city's workforce as people of color by 2022 and 45% of the city's workforce as women by 22. So is there a discussion on that motion? This was the presentation we received last cycle. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
What is your, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a staff direction related to item number three now that it is approved. And I have worked with staff on this. It is simply moving that staff of the Department of Human Resources in conjunction with IT be directed to develop a website that will include quarterly workforce dashboards and annual enterprise EEO plans and a report back to the committee of the whole by the end of quarter one on progress of those items. I have worked with the city's coordinator's office on this language and also the mayor's office on this.
Okay, so Councilmember Johnson has moved a staff direction, which is about translating the work of human resources to an accessible website. Discussion on the motion, seeing none. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That item is approved. And then finally, we do have on our agenda reports of committees. I don't know if there are key items that folks feel like they need to mention. Otherwise, I would ask that we be able to just adjourn our meeting. So I'm just looking to committee chairs if there is something you want to alert us to.